Reporting has begun.
Welcome, everyone. It is 6:00 PM. I would like to officially call this meeting to order. I would like to take roll call first, Councilman Goldsmith.
Here.
Councilman Challenger.
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
And Mayor James, I am here. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All right, so first on our agenda is the Charles County Historic Preservation Society. You know what? I'm going to have you guys come on down. Come join us. And what we're trying this time, so you are a bit of our guinea pig, so thank you for that. Come on. Yep, grab another chair. We're trying to stick to a time schedule. Yes, so we'll see how it works. We'll see how it works. No, no, no. All right, and so that we have it on the record, if you guys could state your name and your positions, that would be wonderful. And you just lightly push that. It's... Push it again. It's persnickety.
There you go. Just took a while.
All right. Laura, it's yours.
Mary Beth Chandler, Chair for the Historic Preservation Commission for the Town of La Plata.
Stuart Bowling, Vice Chair for the Historic Preservation Commission for the Town of La Plata.
Franklin A. Robinson, Jr., and I'm a private citizen of Charles County.
So what brings you here today?
Okay, we want to discuss properties that are... involve the construction of the library here in La Plata. Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to be present for this work session to discuss the structures of 206 and 208 Washington Avenue that are owned by the town but leased to the county for 99 years. The question before us this evening is, would the town want to see these structures preserved or repurposed if it does not impact the library project? At present, it is the understanding of the La Plata Historic Preservation Commission that the library will be constructed on the east end of the properties, parallel to the railroad track. The grounds of these properties are currently being maintained by the county until construction begins. However, it appears the structures are still overseen by the town staff. The 206 structure will have to be relocated or demolished to make way for the construction of East Talbot Street. Vice Chair Mr. Bowling will address why the commission believes these structures contribute to the architectural landscape of the town, and Mr. Robertson will explain the vision of these structures if they are preserved. Both of these structures are listed in the 2002 inventory of the Maryland Historic Trust as contributing to the La Plata Historic District and are also mentioned in the Hermitage Maryland Historic Trust workup as structures contributing to the view shed of the Hermitage. Originally, the land parcels were part of the Hermitage, which is on the National Register of Historic Sites. 206 is one of three remaining structures known as the Posey Row Houses. It was built in 1906 by Mr. Adrian Posey, who started the first bank here in La Plata. The 208 structure was built in 1922 by Mr. Ralph Lorenz, who owned and operated the first town ice plant on Kent Avenue and constructed rows then houses in the town of La Plata. These structures, while humble, are examples of housing styles that are fast disappearing from the La Plata townscape, and they offer an important window into a La Plata of the early 20th century. I'll turn it over to Stuart Bowling.
Thank you. I don't have too much to add to that, except to say that in my capacity with the Historic Preservation Commission, you know, obviously preserving history was the primary thing we'd like to get done here. And you can really only have two kinds of history. You can have the kind of history that you read about, and you look in books, or you might see pictures of, or maybe video of, of some kind. But you can also have the kind of history that's really living, that you can experience firsthand, that you can actually be a part of, you can actually engage with it. And when you take a structure that's existing now, like these two, which are linked to our past and are linked to the early part of the town, and you demolish it, you move it from the kind of history you can engage in and be a part of, and to put it into that kind of history that's only going to be read about in books somewhere, and maybe never. These two houses are not great architectural treasures in the sense of the type of style that they are, or the uniqueness of their design in the grand scheme of things, but in our town, they are. You're not going to find another one like the Hotchkiss House anywhere in town that's contemporary to the time period. And as far as the, what I call the Lorenz House, that one, if I recall, wasn't that a subject for maybe a movie at one time? It was going to be... So it obviously has a kind of charm that's noticed beyond just La Plata. Everyone coming into town, driving down Washington Avenue, knows that house. It would be a shame to lose it if we can preserve it. And all we're looking for is a window of opportunity to see if we can find a way to preserve these two homes.
All right, my turn. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to talk about these two structures. As Ms. Chandler mentioned, I am putting forward a few ideas regarding how these two homes can be preserved without any impact on the library or the extension of East Talbot Street. First, 206, one of the three remaining houses built as part of Posey Row, and at present said to be a candidate for demolition because of the extension of East Talbot Street. In a walk over the property and considering the stated location of the library on the upper end of the parcel, 206 could conceivably be moved to a lot behind 208 with the front facing the extension of East Talbot Street. This is a benefit in that it would preserve the house, give the extension of East Talbot Street a historic streetscape, and the home continues to be a part of the La Plata Historic District and a contributing factor to the setting of the Hermitage. Interior spaces were renovated when the building was used for law offices, and while the layout is, for the most part, original, interior finishes have been updated. The exterior is a quaint late Victorian design with high integrity, except for the enclosed porch, which could easily be restored. With the house moved, its exterior restored, it could once again be used for offices, spaces for small group meetings, a home for a nonprofit, boutique shop of some sort, and would give the new East Talbot Street a sense of place and context. And House 100 is also one of the three remaining Posey Houses that has been restored and is currently used as a law office. Secondly, 208, the Lorenz House, has not only structural integrity, but the interior spaces retain a high level of their original finishes, moldings, and the layout. On what would become a prominent corner of East Talbot Street and Washington Avenue, 208 could easily become a visitor center for not only the town of La Plata, but also for Charles County and Southern Maryland as a whole. The lot has ample size for limited parking, and the interior spaces, once restored, could provide room for visitors or tourist information, as well as panels highlighting La Plata and Charles County history. There are many specimen trees on the grounds, and preserving the house and grounds retains the settings for the Hermitage, enhances the La Plata Historic District, and provides one more important aspect to the goal of having a walkable town. Its proximity to the new library would also be a positive aspect as visitors could easily walk between the three structures along the new East Talbot Street. In conclusion, this is a rare opportunity for La Plata to set an example for not only Charles County, but Southern Maryland, by being creative with the adaptive reuse of two of its landmark buildings, while still achieving the goal of having a new library in town. The project would garner positive public attention in its commitment to innovation, preservation, and retaining a human scale in town planning, all the while looking to the future while honoring the past. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will open it up for questions. Go ahead. Make sure your mic's on.
Mr. Robinson is actually the Chair of the Charles County.
That is correct. I am here as a private citizen. I have been told.
Councilman Goldsmith, you need to... There you go.
Thank you. Appreciate that. You gonna bill me for that? Would you believe that?
No, no, I don't.
You just outed me as the Chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission.
We had an informal meeting among basically us as well, and at that time, you know, we discussed these issues. Have you kind of informally made inquiries around the county administration to see what support you have? And as I answered, none?
Since I am not in an official capacity, I... The only thing I can say is you probably have more information than I have been able to glean, so, for what that's worth. I don't... My sense is it's always, it's been very quiet, shall we say. Yeah.
Okay. As I told you at that meeting that we were discussing things, you know, we don't have any control at this point in time. Now, I think what, as we discussions, what they're kind of looking for is a letter of support that they support the concept. That's all. We can't provide any funds for it. Do we think this is a good idea? And if so, we could draft a letter to the county and say we support this concept, and then...
Or I think just being willing to look at a way to preserve these houses in addition to getting the library, I think. Is that correct?
The key thing's going to be, if you try to do the things you're talking about, is money.
Of course.
And it sounds like maybe the county's not even thinking about anything, and therefore probably reluctant to provide any money. Is there grants or something out there that could do this thing, particularly moving 206?
Funny you should ask. See, that, well, that is a key to a lot of historic preservation, that if there is buy-in from the town and hopefully the county, yes, there would be grant monies out there to help with restoration. I don't know so much about the moving of it, because a lot of preservation is preserving things in situ, i.e. where they are, but that doesn't mean that you can't find grants, especially economic development grants perhaps. And I think the fact that you would be saving two historic buildings that add to the landscape of the town, that are both in your Historic District and contribute to the Hermitage, I think there are grants and things out there. It's just a matter of getting them. So, but like I said, I have no idea if the county is even open to discussing this. So, because that, I think, my sense is, like I said, I'm only speaking as a private citizen at the moment, is that there, nobody wants to be the first to go and either say anything or do anything. So I think that if you all were willing to say that you would be open to looking at a different plan, or hey, can you maybe try to save these? Then that would put the pressure on the county to say, yes, no, maybe so. And at least you would have gone on record that you were open to something innovative and interesting.
I guess with that in mind, again, keep in mind that we don't have any control at this point in time, I would suggest maybe a letter from the Historical Society requesting just what you've said tonight, basically, that we put an endorsement on it to go to the county and say we support the concept. That's what I think is possible.
Thank you.
I add in here, just briefly, the way we came to this point this evening is we were told by Mr. Stahl in February, and we got the very clear message that the houses would be demolished. Okay, that was February. In May, Janine Harrington got a letter from the Charles County Planning and Growth Management Office of concern about the houses, and was there any... I don't, I never saw the letter, actually. Was there any interest in these homes? Perhaps somebody here can elaborate on that more. But it was passed on to me through the office staff here, because they felt it was appropriate for us to respond. And a county employee then contacted me and said, would we be willing to chat with Historic Preservation for the county? And we said yes, and so that's what brought us here this evening. We did not initiate this with the county. I think it needs to be clarified that the county initiated the conversation.
Yeah, and I think to kind of just add a little bit to that, as I do, my sense is that, is that our commission would be 100% behind it, but of course, I can't speak for them.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, we have two. I think I know you. So I just have two questions for you. Have 206 and 208 been designated as historic? Have they been added to the Historic Registry?
In 2002, following the tornado, the Maryland Historic Trust came down here, and we have maps that show the Historic District as laid out by them in the town of La Plata, and it included Washington Avenue, Oak Avenue. It's a large span of... That has been designated as Historic District, yes.
Okay, so I thought that the...
But nothing has ever developed from that. The plan, I do believe, or the district was designated at that time. They were hoping to get funding following the tornado for some of the, what was considered historic homes here in the town to be reconstructed.
So do the homes have to be added to the registry in order to be considered historic?
That, no. As long as they're in the Historic District, they are part of the historic landscape, and they have been... They're included in all of those structures. Now, you can specifically designate structures if you want. There's the county can, if a private owner wants to designate their property as historic, there's a procedure to do that as well. But no, they're not, but they don't have to be in order to be in the Historic District.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and then the other question is, you said that the interior had been renovated. Does that change the historical value? Because I know that some things that are historic, they have to be in their original state.
So the interior of 20... That's 206, is that right? Yes. It's, the layout is the same. It is just what happened, well, from my eye, what it looks like is that the lawyer who purchased the building back in the day went in and took out the wallboard. It just basically, quote unquote, renovated it, put in kind of your standard Lowe's trim and that sort of thing. But the layout is the same, and it's, I mean, it's certainly, you could live in it tomorrow. I mean, it's in good shape. But does that change it? Not necessarily. Most of the time, historic structures, they will... It's most important that the exterior retain the integrity. The interior, you hope that it does, but a lot of times, unless there's a specific easement on the interior, that's not protected.
One last question. How does that benefit the residents? It's not a tourism site. It's not like you can go in, tour it, and look at it.
Not now, you can't, but certainly, like I said, my thought was that, especially with 208, you're in a prime, you will be in a prime lot to bring in, hopefully, people that are maybe just driving through, or that will take the chance to come off of 301 and kind of be a visitor center, you know, maybe encourage people to stay in town, have lunch, go on a walking tour perhaps. I mean, you have, then you have a venue in your town to kind of generate some interest of people who do not live here, but also for those that do live here. I mean, think of that when you, let's say, if you're doing any advertising through your tourism, well, through the county tourism department or whatever, is that you've say, oh, go to the visitor center on Washington Street and East Talbot Avenue, and you can get brochures, you can take a walking tour of La Plata. You can have perhaps 206, that's the Posey House, right? I get them all confused. Might be a place for nonprofits to have meetings, if that is a necessity. So I think it can benefit, the only limits are the limits to your imagination.
I assure you, this is my last question.
Oh, that's all right. I have nowhere to be.
No, I do respect your time. If you were to designate it as a historic building and for people to come in and pick up brochures, what would these brochures be, too? What in our town would they see?
Oh, well, well, first of all, you don't have to designate it as historic for it to be the visitor center. Yeah. All right, so you would put in, look at the range of brochures that you can pick up at the Crane Visitor Center. I mean, there's the African-American brochure that shows different sites throughout Southern Maryland, Destination Southern Maryland. There's many sites in Charles County, Port... No, but you want, you want to go broad, and then whatever, whatever the Historic Preservation Commission and the Historical Society, they would have their point. And then you could have certainly historic panels in there. If you've been down to Port Tobacco and seen some of the panels that they've got, you could talk about the history of La Plata, the history of African-Americans within Charles County, within La Plata, within Southern Maryland, the tobacco culture, the railroad culture. I mean, there's just, it's endless, the story that you can tell, and it gives you a place to tell it.
I'd like to add the Train Station Museum as well. I mean, Stuart Bowling has done an incredible, incredible job there, if you've seen it. And there would be panels such as that.
I'd actually love to be able to turn that into a La Plata museum and have the one room at the Train Station Museum right now for the La Plata history, but there's so many more stories to tell. There's so much more we could do if we had more space. And of course, putting those panels together in the Train Station Museum as they are today, you know, that was all an effort to get the fastest ones we could get done and get them up there for people to come in and see, but there are just so many more we could develop if we had more space to put them in.
Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins, I would for, thanks for being here tonight. I'm curious by your commentary about moving one of the houses and it would not impede the extension of Talbot. So have you, probably a leading question, but... So you haven't really done any kind of a, quote, site plan, per se?
No, that would not be, that would be...
No, I was just curious whether you had like a map or something, you kind of played around.
No, just, we met on site, and we walked around, and I was shown or pointed to where the library would be, and that's actually a very deep lot, as you all know. So in my little brain, it looks like there's plenty of room to make that onto a lot behind 208, move to 206, because it's literally right there. So you, basically, you would just do that, and you could plan...
So you only have to move one house?
You only got to move one house.
And then the presumption that the Lorenz House is not going to impede the putting of the extension of Talbot Street.
Okay.
And that they can accomplish that without demolishing the Lorenz property.
Well, if they're going, if they're going to make East Talbot Street straight, the only one that's in the way is the Posey House, and even that, depending on how wide it is, I mean, it would be, you know, up against the side of it, but, you know.
And then I was fascinated by you said the La Plata Historic District. So when was that created?
In 2002.
Okay, and that was done by the Maryland Historic Trust. So are there any conditions or requirements attached to that?
Not that I am aware of. Are you, Franklin?
No.
Is there funding available?
Yes, there would be.
Well, that's the question, would be, if what?
Oh, well, you'd have to take the initiative to preserve these houses. They're not going to give you money. Okay. So, but yet again, that said, they're not just going to write you a check either, because it's you and people in Frederick and people in the Eastern Shore.
Competition.
So, right. Plus, since the Hermitage is on the National Register, any, any, well, anything that alters the view shed of that as it was laid out when that was designated, you're, is going to have to have a review.
And the Hermitage is the one...
That is correct. Yes, the old, right.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to have our Assistant Town Manager, Michelle, chime in a little bit about the 2002 designation of the Historic District, since she was actually...
Yeah. We talked around here. So, back in 2004, the town received a grant from the USDA to develop a Historic Preservation Commission, which we did. And Historic Preservation Commission did spot designations. They didn't create a Historic District. They did spot designation from residents that were interested in applying for tax credits, but they had to have a designation. So there's about 16 houses, I believe, Oak Avenue, Washington. I don't remember if 206 and 208 are on there.
There was no damage at that time to those structures that I'm aware of.
With the spot designation, some of the conditions were that when you, if you wanted to go for tax credits, you had to, your rebuilding, remodeling, had to agree with the Department of Interior standards at the time. So as far as I know, Tom O'Farrell's house on Oak Avenue is really the only one that took advantage of the tax credits. But we don't have, the town's not, not a specific area designated, there's spot designations. There's a house on the other side of 301.
Melton and La Grange and Melton.
Yes, La Grange and then the architect's house.
Mittens?
Ron Mittens. So that's how that came about. And one of the things wrong, out of my mouth, as far as the library, it's going before DRB on August 13th. So the county is very far along with their planning process.
Yeah, so that's... I hate to say, we're in the 11th hour of the 11th day, and that's what we are with the not being in a Historic District. That's hurt, that could hurt us. And I, five years ago, when I came in as mayor, I said, two things we need to do is do a Historic District. And this is when we did the HPC, because I said, I was looking at, two things came up. One was solar can, solar carport canopies, and that is enough to keep me awake at night. And the other thing was 5G was coming down, and so we instantly put together some guidelines for that. But none of the houses were ever registered with the Historic Trust. And that's hurtful on that, because if had it been, we'd be having a different conversation right now. With the moving of the houses, I can say from my position, I would protect every single home that is, has history in our town, because I love, love the charm with that. It's not, and I'm surprised that, since that 208 was in your family, that that was never registered, even, you know...
I don't know if you've ever been involved in registering a house.
I have not been.
Quite costly. And quite a, and very time-consuming, usually private. Well, Franklin, you can speak to that better than I.
Sure. Well, for the county's designation, it's actually not that bad, quite frankly. And as far as expense, I would say fairly little to none, because staff will work up the papers for you as long as you agree to it. That's the thing. You do have to have a plat, you know. But if you go for the Maryland Historical Trust designation and that sort of thing, or, you know, an easement especially, that, that's a little bit of work. But the other thing that, I cannot, what is your name again? Michelle brought up is actually tax credits, to speak to the whole paying for things. Historic tax credits are for businesses as well as private individuals. So designating those two would actually, you would double your money in the sense of places to go or businesses that may be interested in restoration in order to get the tax credits once they do that. So, but the 13th is a Saturday, so are they reviewing this on a Saturday? Oh, next Wednesday, okay.
This mark?
Because last I heard, it was only at 30%.
Our powerful Plata DRB you're referring to.
So their plans...
Laid out, you're very far along.
And I might also point out that the Hotchkiss House, in its renovation, has probably taken steps to ensure that it would not be any type of historic. I would, you know, but I disagree with Mr. Robinson. But, you know, the kitchen was completely removed. I mean, you know, it was made into a commercial office, and there were certain pieces that they had to do in order to comply with commercial office space. And so the interior has been totally renovated, and the things that made it a home were clearly removed to create the commercial office space out. From the very get-go, I do have to say, the town, in trying to work with the county, and we all know that sometimes that's a challenge, we were very subservient to them in this, to try and get this moving along. The county, from the very get-go, did make it clear that their intention was to remove the structures. They did not want to maintain old houses. The town, our negotiation was, we're land only. We were turning the land over to the county in a 99-year lease. We were turning the land over to the county in a ninety-nine year lease and they were going to build the library. We have said, Michelle and I both sit on subcommittees of that. I sit on the construction subcommittee. Really with not a lot of input, but it is something that, you know, they had made clear that their intention is to build a modern library and that they had outdoors, uh, you know, they wanted a park like setting in the front. And they had certain goals that they were looking at with respect to that. And I think the town just tried to respect that this was a county project. And it really wasn't, you know, the town was trying to keep it in the town. And that was our goal, was to keep the library in the town.
With that said, you know, and even the two oh eight, uh, it is a hundred years this year. It is not ADA compliant, so that there will, there, for anybody to come in.
Yeah, you'd have to, yeah, you'd have to retrofit it for sure.
So my concern is, um, the library is moving forward with that. And I think there's, we're in silos. We have not been working with, um, you know, historic preservation, the Charles County one and the library. We're all in silos. They're moving forward, knowing that this is all free land and it's, they don't have any encumbrances. There aren't any houses that are going to be on it. They have already stated that they're looking at a clean slate there. They know what they're going to be doing with that. With that said, um, if, uh, if the county is willing to and you all have funding to, to move it, I don't think it, it's going to go on that property. If you could move it someplace else, uh, within the incorporated town limits, I would definitely support that. But I would not, um, support something that is going to, um, deter the library where they are already well into the planning of, uh, the layout of the building and all of that. Then all of a sudden throw in two houses in there that they didn't plan on, uh, that land that was given to them. So, um, in my opinion, I would write a letter tomorrow saying, God bless you guys. You can do what you want with those houses if the, you know, we can, if you can move them in X amount of days and you do the insurance, if you guys take care of all of that, their structures that will be, unfortunately, they will be demolished because that was the plan.
Now, when you say you guys, are you, you talking about the Charles County Historic Preservation Commission? Or Charles, La Plata?
Whoever is the entity that wants those houses and can move those houses and can get insurance to move those houses and take claim of those houses, I would not be opposed to it. I would have to ask council.
Obviously, the Plata can't do it because we're under your jurisdiction. So, you know, we have no power.
Yeah, we will not, it, I would not support funding that because we made that decision when we bought those homes.
That's correct.
That's, that's what we were going to do. At that time, it should have been, if we wanted to preserve them, they should have been preserved. And as I said, five years ago, I said, get it on the books. I pushed hard for that. No one did. And now here we sit with, um, nothing but pleas to say, could you help us? Well, we don't have anything, they're not historic, they're old.
Okay.
Because they're not registered and that's unfortunate.
They are contributing factors though, in that you will have to go through an MHT review. Or the county will, somebody will have to.
Yeah.
Regardless of where they are in the planning stage.
And, and that might be with the county, the county really does, um, from what I have heard, want to wash their hands at this and they just want the land without any encumbrances.
I find that interesting since they did approach us about it, you know?
Well, it depends who approached you on that.
Well, obviously, uh, somebody from the county government approached Mrs. Harrington, Janine Harrington.
So they might have a plan that we have not been told about?
We don't have, we certainly haven't been told anything. The last first thing we had was, uh, was my, an offer to meet with Mary Beth and the La Plata Commission.
Which was requested, so.
So, so since, all right, so let's, let me try this tack. So since you technically still own the houses, you've only given them a ninety-nine year lease, you would give the houses to whoever would move them, is that correct? Because you own the houses, right?
As one vote, I would, I would be in favor of whoever wants to preserve those homes and has the insurance and has the permission from the county to move those. My vote would be yes.
So that would have to be, because if there was a notice put in the paper that if anybody wanted to move these houses and had the insurance, that the, that the town of La Plata will give you a deed free and clear to these houses off the land.
Do we have that capability anymore?
That would be a great question for our attorney.
So Steve, that's, see, there we are. We've got another question, because then you can't really say, you know, if you can move the houses, because you have to find out if you, in my mind, since you're still the landlord, you've just given a lease.
Right.
Right? So somebody would have to, somebody would have to say, hey, it's okay for you to move this house.
And, you know, that's a great question to ask the attorney. I will, I will pose that question to the attorney, since he wrote the lease on that. And I'm going to ask council, since I spoke for myself, what is your, uh, what is your druthers on this? If the attorney says, yeah, you can sign over the lease to anybody, are you okay with, um, having someone else have the deeds on those two houses and be responsible for moving it, insurance, all of that to leave?
I'm going to say, I don't have enough information to make that call today. There's no way, um, of course, I'm in support of preserving, um, any kind of aesthetically pleasing building that we have in town that uplifts our community, which I think to some degree they do. But to, to turn over a deed to homes that the town owns, I think we'd have to have a discussion with the attorney. I, I couldn't say yes or no.
Madam Mayor, so we did discuss this previously. You were very much in favor of those homes being moved if someone would come in and move them. I don't have a problem with that. You know, they have that type of value and I have no doubt that they do. I have no problems with, you know, someone moving them to another space. That is a question for the attorney and I would support whatever he had to say. But in thinking about moving them, you would have to already have a plan for where they would go. I can't see a space.
Well, I would imagine that, that would, if somebody stepped up and said, yes, I'll move it, that's on them to find a lot or it would, it may be moved out of the town of La Plata. I mean, it's.
Then it defeats the purpose, right? Then, let me finish.
Okay.
The entire point was that they were a part of our historic district, as you called it. And they would be of value to the town. But if you move them out of the town, wherever they go, then they no longer have the value that you presented here tonight. And so in my mind, that kind of defeats the whole conversation. Because they are not doing what you have proposed, which you did an elegant drive of. I really appreciated the information and it got me thinking, and so did you, Ms. Chandler. So with all of that being said and presented to us tonight, it defeats the purpose if they are moved out of the town, because they no longer do those things.
So then that's a qualifier to, to giving them away, which is going to impede anybody's interest. I do get, I get your point. So, and if, so yet again, it's, it's a, it's a, it's the soup that no one, no one sees.
So, you know, you might want to contact the mayor of Port Tobacco. Since we have one of their structures, maybe they want to all of our structures.
Oh, I can, I can pretty much tell you that, no, that, well, I don't know where they'd put it, quite frankly.
Yeah, they only have one square mile, I'm being facetious, but that is, um, I guess the next step here is we need to talk to the attorney. We are really over the ten minutes, but this is an experience, fifteen minutes, this is an experience.
Within hours.
Yes, I know, I know you're.
Just, just a quick, I guess, observation, uh, I, I, I mean, I'm generally supportive, but I would like to qualify by having more information, what the lease says and what we can and cannot do.
Yeah.
And then just for future, it, it, I mean, because I'm intrigued by your thinking.
Thinking.
Okay. But, and again, I don't want to dwell on the past, but looking forward, and Mary, you said it, and I totally agree with that. We have to get out of these silos and we have to collectively talk and think ahead and kind of talk more, so we don't, we can avoid these kind of things. And again, I'm not catching dispersion, I'm just.
Oh, that's just an observation.
Observation that, because I do think, uh, I, I do think historic districts or historic structures concentrated in an area can be, and even for us, can be an economic generator. I, I believe that, so, but that, I would support it, but I would like to have some more information as well.
And there are steps after, whether our attorney says yes or no, whether we can deed the house over, who's going to do the advertising in the newspaper? How is that going to get done? I mean, there's a process, is there? I mean, and it's not a, a quick process and I think we're up against time.
And let me pose this question. If the county came back and said, you know what, we've rethought this, we want to preserve those, would you all be on board with that?
If they're funding it, absolutely.
Can we get that in a letter?
That's my point, basically.
Yeah.
I don't want to overstep, this is kind of like, I, I don't want to re-gift something we give.
Oh, no, no, no.
And now we're going to say, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Now we want to kind of take that back and preserve that. If they come back and say, here's our plan and we want this and this house preserved and this is how it works into our blueprint, absolutely, we can do that, because it only enhances our town. But that is their call to make. And I don't feel comfortable writing a letter until I hear them say, yes, we need a letter.
You can say, hit and write.
Right. Yes, yes, put in writing that.
That is accurate. That is absolutely correct.
We need a letter of support from the town, from.
They have to commit, they have to. Oh, sure, sure, yeah.
But what the Charles County Historic Preservation Commission needs is a statement that says, if they could be preserved and not impede on the project, we would be in favor of that.
Have you gotten anything from Charles County government in writing?
Only, only one.
What I have are simply all the emails that went back and forth from the planning office to me regarding an informal chat. And from the informal chat with Mr. Robertson, it was decided, well, he's not going to carry a banner to the county, or a flag to the county, asking this when there are no troops behind him. So is the town behind it or isn't the town behind it?
I believe the town would be behind it if we knew that we weren't going to.
Be held responsible for anything.
Take off the county saying, all right, we've, we've already given you this land with these things. Now we kind of want to take just a little bit back.
No, no, but you wouldn't be saying, you wouldn't, that is not what you would be writing. You would be writing, we would support it if you decided to. You're not taking anything away, but you've already given them. You're just saying, we would support the preservation if it works in with your plan. Is that correct, Mr. Goldsman?
That's all I'm thinking, looking for, they would have to draft a letter, pretty much spelling out the history stuff.
We previously drafted a letter last September asking to speak with you all about this, to see if we could be involved with that.
What if you draft a letter for our, uh, just like I have to do when I'm asking the county and I have to draft a letter and say, please, sir, for somebody's signature, draft us a letter for our signature on what you want to say. And that is, when we look at the letter, that is something that the council can vote on. I feel very uncomfortable, very uncomfortable, um, and I'll be public about it. I want to preserve, I don't feel comfortable going to the county saying, we've given you this. Now we want to preserve these two pieces.
That's not what's being asked. That's not what we're asking.
The way it's going to look, like we're going to tell you what to do with these two homes on there, um, unless you are very good at wordsmithing and you could have something that doesn't look like we are now. We've given this to you, now we're coming back and saying, eh, we want these two in there.
May I ask a question?
But with respect, um, at the end of the day, from my understanding is, whether it's a staff person from the county planning office or our planning office, or they're not the ultimate decision makers. So good for them that they reached out to you, somebody from the PGM, great. But he or she doesn't get to make the decision that commit, they got, they got to work through the county administrator and then go to the county commissioners.
Director Harrington.
So I feel very uncomfortable signing something when, great, you got a, an outreach, an email from a staff person.
Yeah, that's who I.
That's great, but frankly, that.
Director Harrington's on, so she might be able to provide us a little bit more information in our short fifteen minutes.
I'm joining you from the mountains of Vermont, hopefully you can hear me. So I received an email from Kathleen, um, I don't know how to pronounce her name, C A, C A? Who was a, she stated that she was a relatively new planner at Charles County PGM. She specialized, or specializes in historic preservation and cultural resources. So I think the key is, I, Charles County is a large entity. So I, I'm not sure if the historic preservation side of staff has had a conversation with the development services side of staff. So that would be my recommendation, is that the Charles County Historic Preservation Planners and the actual development services, um, have a discussion as well. I know we need to talk to our lawyer about certain things and, and they probably need to talk to their lawyer. But that would be my first recommendation, is to have the county staff talk to each other, because they want this to happen. But like I said, it's two separate sides of the planning and growth management. So I don't know if they've spoken or not. But I did receive the letter from Kathleen and I forwarded that to our Historic Preservation Commission for consideration.
Thank you.
Maybe a question that Bobby might be what I answer. As well, from working for the state, I know we get a lot of requests for when the, when the state is building something, as their due diligence, we will get a request from historic preservation saying, is this X, Y, and Z? Is that something that the county is just going through their checklist saying? That's what I'm thinking as well. They're just going through their checklist and that was the courtesy.
Okay.
Could it be? I don't know.
You're asking them to write a letter, them is us.
That's right.
Yeah, as I said, it's, it's an uncomfortable situation to, from my perspective, I'm only speaking for myself, that we're in right now, because this conversation should have been five years ago. Yeah, before we even put a bid in for the library to, to preserve any of that. I know, well, and that's why we can't, I got to the commission that, uh, our illustrious Patty went in, really pushed hard for that. So, yeah, I, I see you're on there. All right, well, we've said a lot of words and I'm not quite sure we, we came up to any conclusion.
We haven't finished all the words yet. Quick comment as far as the Mars DRB for the library. Uh, and you say we're at the eleventh hour, eleventh minutes, I think, we're not really. I mean, how long is it going to take for them to break ground over there? And we're looking at a corner of that lot that we're talking about. It's not going to impact the library's construction. It might impact the bulldozers just knocking everything down in the front, yeah. But it's not that difficult to hold off that little corner. So I don't think we should just back away because it's too late. Until it happens, keep trying.
I think that is a great thing to do.
I'm optimistic, I'm handful.
I know, so on.
The challenge isn't necessarily friends, as I would say, at two oh six.
Oh, yeah, that.
Probably has more external architectural features that would be something of interest. That one, my assumption is they would want to remove fairly quickly in the process when they vote firm, because the access to the backside of that lot is going to be through what will eventually become Talbot Street going straight up. And my assumption is, even if it's not a paved street right off the bat, it certainly would be the construction access to the site. So I would assume that the house removal would have to happen. And Michelle, if I'm not mistaken, they're still looking to break ground in the spring.
Yeah, last we heard.
Last we heard, somewhere this spring, spring of twenty twenty-three. And so the assumption to get this all together is that you'd have to have it removed.
Right.
Prior to.
To that. So I would task you all to get something in writing from the county. And that, I know what it's, it is, it's just going round and round now, but whether it's from the elected officials there or whether it is from their county administrator that says, this is what we're. that says, this is what we're doing with the land. This is how we can preserve or we are not preserving and get the final answer there. And if they say that they need a letter of support, if we do decide that, then that's something that we can discuss. But if they have no plans whatsoever and it's just checking a box because they have to do their due diligence, then we are putting a lot of, we're pinning a lot of hope into something that is not going to happen. And, and I don't mind taking the time. I hate wasting the time and, and I think time is of the essence.
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, I think it, you know, it should be from whoever can make the decision. It shouldn't be from someone that can say what they would like to see happen. It has to be from a decision maker.
And who might that be?
I'm assuming it's, it's the county commissioners, it's the county commissioners. I don't think that it can be a staff member, you know, I think it would have to be the decision makers. We've had this conversation previously with you and at that point, and we had, we reached out to the county commissioners and from my understanding, they were not interested in preserving those homes.
And that's my understanding as well.
Have to come back from them saying that they are now.
But it is an election year and anything can happen.
Election is pretty much over.
Well, not, it's not over yet and, and they're not meeting during the month of August.
Yeah. So if, if you wouldn't mind getting it from either the.
As long as, like, like Mr. keeps saying, as long as if I go to that effort to try to do that, and then it comes here and you're like, oh no, we don't want to do that, then, then I have wasted my time.
I think that you have heard all of us say that we are in favor of preserving any of our history. And that, and if, and chime in if, if I'm not speaking correctly, any of the historical homes, we're in favor of preserving that. As long as the county who now has jurisdiction over there is okay with that. So that is your tasker. Thank you, Frank. I appreciate it.
No problem.
I appreciate that. And, and I appreciate you really working hard to preserve the integrity of La Plata. It is such a great town and it needs to be preserved. Now we just need to think forward and see what other ones might be in jeopardy and preserve them and register them and make it difficult for them to be.
Well, this is a wake up call because otherwise you're going to have very large buildings along streets and no one will want to walk anywhere.
Yes, yes, you're absolutely right. Well, thank you all very much. I appreciate it and it's always great seeing you.
Thank you.
Yep, appreciate it.
Okay, so epic fail on the 15 minutes, but we're going to try to get back on track. So special event fee that's going to be Assistant Town Manager Minor. Come on, we're going to try.
Last year, many years, we talked about special net permit. So several years ago, we instituted that permit application. And then last year, you guys, working with the staff, we added some fees to cover at least some of our, at least some of our overtime costs for police, public works and things of that nature. So we knew when we implemented this that we may get a little bit of pushback. And we have gotten a little pushback from several organizations asking us to waive fees or so the way our structure is set up, we adopted our fee schedule. And it is not at the staff level that we can, we can waive fees. We, it is not for us to do. So the mayor's had some conversations with a couple organizations that are having some, some heartache with, with the fees that we're charging. So.
So one I think is pretty easy and we had the attorney involved in, in this as well. And the town manager, it's Rocktoberfest. We are a designated partner with Rocktoberfest. So we had a conversation with the attorney and we said, all right, so what does a partnership mean? They are the only, they are the only organization 501(c)(3) that we, first of all, we block off our, our streets from Thursday night, I mean Friday night, Friday night, chief? When do we block off Rocktoberfest? Friday or Thursday?
No, I think it's normally Thursday.
Yes.
It just depends on the vendor that they're using and when they can get into setup.
So Thursday night, Friday, Saturday, and then it's torn down on Sunday.
Yeah, it's usually sold by Sunday noon.
And the other thing is, Rocktoberfest, we proclaim the first Saturday, and so does the county as Rocktoberfest Day. Again, designating this as a town event since we help sponsor it. And then, well, not sponsor it, we are partners with that. The attorney said that we should be getting, we should be having a partnership agreement put in place. And then the third thing is it's a huge economic booster for downtown. You've got organizations from California coming in specifically for this. And the proceeds, all of the proceeds, all of them go back into the Charles County School, Public Schools for their arts and fine arts and music programs. That one, I don't have a, a heartache about because we are partners with that one. Their bill was $2,500 for the amount of police that they would need. And do you remember, chief, if there was anything else in that?
I think there was a public works with the tragic election and things like that. I think there was two public works employees assigned that, but Bobby would know better. I would put.
I don't know off the top of my head, mayor, but I do know we had charges.
And there's the breakdown.
Oh, there is. Thank you. I can make, put my glasses on. So police officers, public works was $250. It was $2,100, a little over for the police officers. And then, of course, they would have to pay for the, the permits. That's not negotiable. Everyone would have to pay for that. So what, obviously, our staff cannot go back on something that we had said. That's number one. Number two is, and this is up for discussion, is the La Plata High School homecoming parade. Bless you. Where we shut off, we close off Route Six for a parade. And how long does the parade last?
Pending 15 to 20 minutes, but our time to shut it down is, you know, we're paying officers for three hours to come in and do it. But it's probably closed for about an hour total.
And that one was, that billing was 17, I think 1,715 or 1,732. 15. And it was suggested to them that they use a different route. Two different routes were suggested that would, one route, they would still need the police on that one. But it wouldn't impact Route Six as much. And the fear that I know the chief has expressed to me is that when you have someone that is coming to the hospital and they only know one way to get to the hospital, you're blocking off that street. With Rocktoberfest, it's Lagrange. So it is, it's not, I mean, that's not an issue on that one. So that was a concern there. And it was also suggested that they start at Laurel Springs and go down to the high school and go around the track like most of the high schools do. I know that's what ours did back in the day, but that was back in the day. So that was, they had alternatives on that one. And then we had a special event permit come in for a concert to be held on September 9th from a non, I don't know if they're, they're not a 501(c)(3), but it is.
They are a nonprofit.
They are a nonprofit. And we said it was, I think that one was 1,700. Am I getting my numbers right? 15. And we did not waive that for them. They pay that. They will bring people into our town. Our police will have to be there. And it will be a Friday night from, I think, four o'clock until nine or 10 on there. They'll be doing the ice cream for kids to come out and then they will have a concert. So what is before you today is how do we move forward?
You got it. Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, two. You do not have a stated criteria for fee waiver. The staff went into, took, took great lengths to calculate these fees and how we would charge them. Seeing our staff work, sometimes the weekends, late into the evenings, that's exhausting. And, you know, I don't even think money is enough to cover the expense to their lives. I am not in favor of waiving any fees. There's no state stated criteria, 501(c)(3). Anywhere they go, I do events in Calvert, they charge us. I do, I've done events in Prince George's, they charged us. St. Mary's, they charged us. And for us to consider waiving fees and to benefit the schools, I'm, I'm happy about that. I think that's amazing. But it's Charles County School. What do they contribute to their school systems in, in terms of these types of events? When they have them, do they give money back to the schools? You know, that's great. And then what is a partnership? A partnership is something mutually beneficial. You know, they get to come in and do their concert. Our people get to enjoy it just like they enjoy the Friday night concerts. What other benefit is it for the partnership, for the town with Rocktoberfest team, whatever that is? And so I'm not in favor of waiving our fees. We went through, took a great deal of consideration in looking at these, and I think that they are definitely warranted.
And the only thing, and that's, thank you very much for your perspective. I always appreciate that. The only thing I can say about being a partner is that they do have the hotels that they book from the people coming from out of town. Whereas our Friday night concerts, they're, most of them are not coming from out of town. You've got people coming in from vendors. You've got Yamaha that's coming in, bringing at least four people from California. They're staying in our hotels. They're eating at the restaurants and it's an economic engine on there. That is the partnership. The other ones are not. And I know my kiddo was in the parade as well, and, and that is such a hometown feeling. And, but is it enough to waive a fee to, to block off Charles Street to still? We're not saying no to the parade, but that's, it's a hard. Previous council, we went round and round and round with this and it's a very hard thing because you put emotions into it.
I work, I work at the Kentville and I have my windows up. Every single day I say to myself, oh, they're supposed to be seen because ambulances and fire trucks and police cars pursuing down Route Six to block that, that's the access to the hospital for ambulances, not only for the people who find it stupid for the hospital, but that's the thing. You know, we can block six, so save street, right? To have that type of event. And they don't have a perspective on time. Emergencies happen when they happen. And we can't say, oh, they're nothing happened during the hours of the day. That's just not true. And those folks don't care who's in the street. They go flying by there. And sometimes it's back to back during the day. And chief, I know you know that you were here. I hear it all freaking day long.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Love to hear other perspectives. Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins. Word four. I have a little mixed feelings. I, I'm probably more inclined with the partnership aspect with the Rocktoberfest. Because it is, I think, is it really has a, to their credit and the town's credit, it has expanded. And that's a good thing. Obviously COVID put a cabash on it, but anyway, I, I think that's, I'm, I'm probably a little more lenient toward that one. The other two, I'm not particularly supportive of that. And thank you for, because I, I really didn't fully think through what happens if there's an emergency on Charles Street. I, I didn't think that through over the years because my kids would walk in and I'd sit there and watch them. But so, and, and I hadn't thought about another route that, that would make some, some sense, frankly, to think, think about La Plata High School doing that. And again, with respect, it's a board of education. I mean, you know, it's like, why, why don't you help out too? Or, you know, where's there, maybe there is, but I don't necessarily see support per se. I, I just kind of.
Justify waiting, offering a waiver to Rocktoberfest and not the others.
Because I think Rocktoberfest is, is a much more economic engine over a course of, it is, it is probably more expensive, yeah, over the course of several days. So that's my logic.
Thank you for that, gentlemen.
I'm trying to think of an alternative route that won't impact the emergency aspect of the hospital. I was thinking, hey, go from the current high school of La Plata to the old La Plata. Do it at Rosick Road, come down Washington Avenue. But again, the ambulances use Washington Avenue all the time as well. Unless they knew ahead of time that they couldn't use that, they had to do the radio station road to come in. And if they're coming from Waldorf, Radio Station Road probably is the fastest route.
The chief has.
Notify emergency communications and there's a road closure. My thought process in, I'm 100% against closing Charles Street for a high school break for several reasons. I worry more about mom taking dad to the hospital only knowing one route and not calling firework to have them there. Or the kid gets stung by a bee and they grab the child and they're going straight to the ER and they only know one route. I worry much more about that than I do the ambulances because we will let them know. Now, that would only be Charles County ambulances. I will guarantee you, if we went over to the emergency room right now, there would be an ambulance from Prince George's County and an ambulance from St. Mary's County there as well. It's a regional medical center. I, I don't go back as far as lots of folks in this town, but I understand the parade used to be on Route 301 and they stopped having it on 301 for a reason. Now we're looking at Charles Street. Well, I know we love, and parades are rare kind, I get it. But we also have to, I, I plan for the one half of 1%. Everybody else plans for the 99.89 and a half percent. I also worry now about event security. We go to great lengths for the Veterans Day Parade. We work with Bobby and his folks. We bring in large trucks. So people will get, I'm not going to tell you that they can't reach because we just don't have that many trucks. But we do our best to block that off so that one actor who's upset with whatever it is in the world cannot reach that parade route. I can't do that. I mean, I can do that for a, a 20-minute high school parade. But there's costs associated with that far beyond having a couple of police officers. I think we have to realize, at least when we come to the Veterans Day Parade, I have enough folks here. We can get people to the hospital if they need. They get panned out last time. I'm not wild about it. But it really sat home with me, and I'm sorry, I'm just kind of going on here. Just prior to the Veterans Day Parade last year, Corporal Johnston was flagged down by somebody in 301. A female was in labor and she was having issues. He helped escort those folks to the hospital and they did what they needed to do. When the parade was over and I picked it down Charles Street to go home, the Dr. Bear ambulance from Children's National Medical Center was pulling in. I don't know if one and one equal two in that situation. But had the road been closed, and this wasn't an ambulance transport, this was husband transporting wife, would there have been a negative outcome because of that? I would think at least if, if this high school pushes this and we go in that direction, that the principal have to sign a waiver stating he is accepting all liability for anybody who has a negative medical outcome because of the road closure. And something tells me that document wouldn't be signed. But we're expected to absorb that liability and, and, you know, I have a rough time with that because our job is to protect anybody and everybody, no matter who they are. So what you guys do with fees, that's up to you. But I, I, and Michelle knows I talk about this. It, it just gives me great heartburn that we closed Charles Street. At any time when we have the regional medical center right there and we've got to let people get there.
Thank you, chief.
Yep, Councilman Matthew Chonzer, word two. I definitely see Councilwoman Bryant Ward's concern about, even as a partnership, we haven't structured our fee schedules such to designate partnership versus non-partnership. I, I, I see the import, of course, of Rocktoberfest. Is there a way as a partner, instead of waiving the fees, we can just pay the fees as a partner? I mean, would that satisfy not, I mean, we wouldn't be waiving it, but we are a partner of the event. Can we not just pay the fee? Granted, it's. Can we not just pay the fee? Granted, it's paying the town.
Paying us.
But, but we're not waiving. Um, and I think there is a problem with waiving it because there's no, there's no designation of when a waiver is or is not appropriate. And I, I definitely see your point on that, but we are a partner. There, there should be nothing in there designating where a partner cannot pay because they're of equal share of the resources of expenses or whatever. So maybe in the partnership agreement that can be addressed with our attorney. As to how that lines up and maybe that is a safe and appropriate and fair way to handle it. Um, but otherwise, you know, I think it's, I think it's important we don't split hairs on waving. And non-waving because then you can get any group that comes in and say, look, why don't we partner with you? And then we have to designate, well, what's a partnership? Why do we choose the partnership? And, you know, maybe that's a question that we can talk with Jay going forward, making this clear. You know, so we don't get ourselves in a situation with denying people access. Do you know what I mean? Because that's the concern is anybody.
Right.
Anybody has a reason to waive a fee, whether it's religious or non or of use to the community. Everybody can pitch an economic boom, but um, you know, we, we can, we can choose who we want to partnership with, but we don't want to be discriminatory. So.
What about the, the parade?
I, 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 I agree with the concerns of the chief. Um, it sounds like there's ample. Other avenues and ways to, to still have a parade. But I, I don't think we should shut down six even if, I mean, it's more of a hassle for twenty minutes and it's probably unfortunately worth. But if we can help them find another spot that we can support them for that.
It was suggested that they all gather at Laurel Springs with their floats there. Because that's what their big thing is, instead of putting it out at the um Charles County government uh parking lot. And then go down um radio station, straight to the high school. And of course, they want the pomp and circumstance of, of downtown because that is the small town feeling. But it is safer to, I mean, you can have people lining up on the high school, so it's not on a street. Again, uh kind of addressing um the chief's concerns about, you know, someone going rogue. When you're on a street where both sides, you could have fatalities if someone. Yep. Whereas if it's on the school property, again, it's a Charles County and it's the Board of Ed's deal that just happens to be.
And there's a lot more room. Out there to put the floats together at Laurel Springs. You got great access from two points. I mean, it's just.
And they can line on.
Correct.
Charles County of public school property.
Correct.
So I have a couple of just quick questions. This is, it's been on six before.
Oh, yes. Do you know how many years has it been?
No, I don't know.
Ever since I've been here except during COVID and then one year they filed really late and I denied Route six. And we used an alternate route. Lieutenant Payne worked with them. It seemed to work well. But again, it's, and I agree, it's that American, we're going to march through the downtown and I get it. The access points that we have to try to control, plus the medical center. It's, it's a lot for a twenty minute parade and I think we're just, I think we buy a liability with, a liability with this.
When is the scheduled event?
October twenty second.
So a little bit of time. I mean, it, it would seem to me, and who's, who is specifically making the request?
The principal.
The high school itself. Um, I, I assume she's a sponsor.
I think it also is a spokesperson, Michelle.
They're the business. So Chief, though, even if we move the route, there's still going to be fees.
Right. And that's a good answer. What are we talking about? Fees here or the route?
Well, if you do fees from Laurel Springs to the high school, it is now on Charles County because that is a Charles County road.
Isn't that our job that you point to us? Are we going to waive our fees? And the answer, you know, for me is no.
So I think that's the question. Are we going to offer?
That is.
Fee waivers. And I think that's we need to get back on track.
I'm failing epically.
Could I offer a suggestion, maybe?
As long as it's pithy.
The uh Chaney Enterprises, when I was there, we used to put Tencel all over the place. But we had a fee for doing that, for people to cover our costs in the situation. The fee never waived. But they were welcome to apply to the Eugene Chaney Foundation to cover the cost. And the foundation might make the donation. In this case, you do have a La Plata Foundation anymore, no?
We do have it, but it is a parade would not qualify for.
Well, but it.
Based on.
But Rocktoberfest.
You know, you know, there can be other charitable routes to help cover the cost. When you're a governmental entity and you have fees in place. Waiving your fees is generally a slippery slope that you just have to be very careful of. And I think, you know, if there's a means to do it, you know, through other ways, then by all means do it that way, but really.
Well, and you're right, it needs to go to Jay um to have a partnership agreement. And he, when we discussed this um July fifteenth, he said that it does need to have a partnership um agreement uh on there. And they talked about maybe being too late in the game this year. Um, we don't have any other partnerships with anybody else, and this has been a long stint, well, long in that it's been eight years. That this has been established and we can say this is our one and only, we don't partner with the hospital. You know, and the hospital does some fantastic, their, their foundation, I should say, not the hospital, the, the hospital foundation, they do amazing work. Um, with that, we don't partner with them, but we do support them in that we attend their events and we pay. And in fact, I, I think we just, they just applied for something through the community foundation to support the foundation for the hospital. Fantastic. That's what, why we set up the community foundation is so that it does take the heat off of us as elected officials saying. Oh yeah, this is a fantastic one. You do get that slippery slope on there. So what I hear you all saying here. I hear we're not waiving the fees for the parade. I hear that loud and clear. Not waving fees. Do I hear saying um have a formal agreement as Jay suggested? That's a partnership that says that clearly outlines. These are your fees. This is what you're going to pay as a partner and this is what we're going to provide as a partner. It's an in-kind service is what the partnership is. The, the police and public works pay for that. But is that, Chief, is that um a line item in your budget or does it just come out of special events?
It, it, it depends. That's a good question. Some comes out of special events if it is town sponsored. If it is not town sponsored, it just comes out of my overtime line.
So what is Rocktoberfest?
I, it, it, the overtime line, yes.
So. The purpose of this conversation, no, to waiving fees. And, and the waiving fees is, is the um, the key word. Partnership, it has to be a legal partnership. That something has to be drawn up where this is what we contribute, this is what you contribute. That's what a partnership is. Having a heartache with that.
I'm in this heartache with that. You're saying that, you know, the people come in, they stay at our hotels. The hotels get that benefit. It does, that's not a benefit to the town. The hotels are not, you know, contributing to us having to pay overtime to our staff. So in the event that something else comes up and we need that funding, it could be very well exhausted um with Rocktoberfest. Um, they're a much bigger organization. I'm, I am not in support of that. You know, they come in, they, they want to do an event. I think any, even any concert that comes to an organization. They have to pay to come and do their concert. It's not free to them. And so I don't support that. Um, if we're not going to charge, I mean, if we're going to charge a small high school and a nonprofit fees to come in. I don't see waiving, waiving our fees for a bigger organization such as Rocktoberfest. I'm sure they get something for it. Um, so I don't see the benefit of partnership to, in my mind, is mutually beneficial. The hotels getting those fees, they don't give us anything for them getting the extra volume. The restaurants, they don't give us anything for getting the extra volume. So that's not mutually beneficial in my mind. The taxes are low. We haven't changed taxes in years and that does not benefit. We're going to get those tax dollars regardless. That's just.
We are, it is um falling under tourism. It's at being advertised statewide and it falls under tourism. So that's a little different than anything else. Um, well, La Plata Parade does not fall under tourism.
I mean, why Chief being thought upon a tourist, basically, but it's understanding.
Because that is the support that we're talking about, the economic engine that it is advertised statewide for this event.
So if I may, I mean, we, I, I hear what you're saying, Councilwoman Bryant Ward. And I, I think it's helpful with an event or an event like this to think of it more than just. What does the town government receive as a benefit? Because our town is made up of, of course, the small businesses and residents here to enjoy as well. So if the small businesses in our community are benefiting from an event like this, that is a contributing factor as to whether or not it's helpful. I mean, we're not made up of just our town government, whether we receive taxes from it, right? I mean, so there is a benefit in getting more people to visit the town of La Plata and to spend money here and to spend money at the hotels and so forth. I understand, you know, we don't, that the town government doesn't directly receive anything for it. Or your neighbor may not receive a, a check of some kind, but there's, there's certainly benefit of getting. Something to look forward to as an event and having our restaurants and businesses receive benefit from that. Nobody's coming from another, I apologize, I interrupted, but it's just, they're not coming from elsewhere to come to the town parade typically, unfortunately, as great as it is. I think the global question of whether or not it's worth it was what was being asked is whether or not there is a benefit to the town. To, to step ourselves into that role as a partnership, but maybe I misunderstood, so.
We are um advertised on all of the um shirts that go out as a partner. Uh, and this, as I said, it's been eight years that they have been working on this as a partner. We don't um shut down a town road for any other event that is not, that we don't partner in. It's our Veterans Day Parade and that's down La Grange and it's Rocktoberfest. And then of course, our, our um. Holiday, I was going to say Christmas, holiday event um and our concerts. So that's where, and it, and it's a hard conversation to have. I hear, I hear what each of you are saying. Um, I think that. We just have to make a final decision on this. Yes, Councilman.
Waiver? No. Once you start it, then everybody's going to be asking for it. So that's pretty simple, I think, overall. The partnership aspect of it, as Jay just said, we need to make it legal. Partners usually share in the expenses. I don't have a heartburn in that we cover half of the expenses for Rocktoberfest. Shutting down Charles Street? No. I think I hit them all.
Good. I think you did. All right. And uh Councilman Challenger, I heard what you said, uh essentially kind of echoing what he said so distinctly.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think, I mean, to have a partnership and not have an agreement. Burnt. Shouldn't do that. So we need to have that lined up and if, you know, whether um. Whether we have them pay, I mean, if, if the consensus is having them pay half of the costs, I guess it's fine. But I think that kind of defeats the philosophical question that we're addressing, but um if.
But you're the one who suggested it.
I, I didn't say half, but, but if they, if they're paying for half, that's, that's great. But I think without a partnership agreement leveling out. Whether we're going to cover the costs or they're going to cover half, we can't do it. So no waiver regardless.
Councilman Jenkins?
I would, I would be, I, I would be convinced that we shouldn't give waivers. But as a caveat, I, I, I would, if we could pursue some kind of a partnership. Because I do think an event like uh Rocktoberfest, because it has progressed over the years. It is multiple nights. And I, and I think, Councilman Challenger, you started to, to hit on it by saying that, that it does benefit. It, to me, it, it's another way to create a sense of place which attracts people to our community. And the reading that I do about post-COVID cities and post-COVID suburbs. People are dying, no pun intended. People are longing for communities where there's a sense of place. Where they come and they can walk, they can go to a bar, they can go to outdoor cafe. And so to me, Rocktoberfest can be that someday. So that would just be my two cents worth, but, but I agree, no waivers. And as the chief surely pointed out, having a parade in Charles Street is not good.
You'd like to add, Councilman Bryant Ward? Okay, thank you. So what I would like to do, there's lots of conversation, um no waivers.
No fee waivers on anything.
On anything. And um a, if we are going to partner with Rocktoberfest, we need it. To be spelled out. And I don't know if that triggers a change in our fee schedule or not. Or if a partnership is just an aside agreement or another agreement uh that we may not have to impact our budget. That I don't know, but that's, I guess, maybe a Jay question or a Martha's question.
So if we're not waiving fees on anything, what do you want in the partnership agreement with Rocktoberfest?
I think that um we will let, kind of let Jay.
Okay.
From, yep, after all that we have said here, try to capture that and see what he can come up with.
We'll let the agreement be brought back to the council.
Yes. That's good. All right. Thanks for keeping us within the ten minute conversation. Uh.
Interim Director of Legislative Services, who did these times, please?
We may, we may need to alter them next week. All right, um seeing that we're on central time. Okay, uh strategic planning comment review?
Um, okay, I will take that. Um, so we did not receive any further comments after our uh work session two weeks ago. The comments that Councilman Jenkins um posed in December were incorporated into that. So if it's the will of the council, we will bring it back on eight twenty three at the business meeting for adoption.
Yeah. I would love that. Counsel? Yes. And, and thank you, Councilman Jenkins, for uh taking the time to do that and, and really looking at that. I appreciate that. You did such a great job in December that I felt like I couldn't add.
I doubt that. No, no, don't, no, 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 I'm, I'm not buying it. With all due respect, I'm not buying it, but anyway.
I tried to say.
My only caveat would be that, and this is probably a future discussion item, two things. We would need to develop some really measurable metrics of how we make progress. Yeah, and then. I hate to say this, but in the town code, it, it says that we should do a, in, in March of each year, there should be a state of the town report. It's in the ordinance, in the town ordinance.
Well, look at that.
And I have examples from North Beach and Chesapeake Beach that I can share. Not, not that we don't have anything else to do.
Irish and Mike are doing it, we should be doing it.
Well, I get, I just think that, that coupling this with a strategic plan and we're going to update the website. Uh, it gives us another way to communicate with the citizens about what we're doing and what we're not doing. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Chief. Oh, we're good?
You skipped over.
Oh, what did I skip over? Good, good night.
And I'll be real quick with.
Oh, the foundation.
Community foundation, just real quick. Um, we're still a little fuzzy on once you guys decided with the foundation. We understand that the hundred thousand dollars in arbit funds, that was taken out, but we still have about seventeen thousand. But we still have about $17,000 in the foundation, well, $15,000 in the foundation account.
What I would like to see, and then if you all want to chime in, I would like to see that still viable, have it filled with people, with new terms on there. I think it's a great way for people not to sit in front of us and say, please, sir, can you give us money? And they have, they are specific criteria that they meet. So it is taken out of our hands on there. It is our foundation, just like the hospital has a foundation, like the county has the charitable trust foundation, which by the way, they copied our foundation on that one. So, yeah, we, we, they, they took all of our goodies and made their own. So I would like to see it filled with new people or renewed terms. Whoever wants to do that, make sure that they, well. With that said, non-caffeine, so. Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, board three. When we had this discussion before, I think I asked, how difficult had it been to maintain board members?
It is, because there are specific criteria for board members.
So how can you function without a board?
Right now, we have three board members that all terms have expired. And until those positions are refilled, they stay on the board according to our attorney. So recently, our banker that was on there, she retired. So we only have three board members. So all three board members have to vote because it's a five-person board. Okay, so to have a board, you have to have three. And one of the three is Sandy Washington, and quite a few of the grants come through as lifestyles, and she accuses herself.
So do you feel that it would be difficult to fill those positions? Or have we not really?
We haven't really tried. I think we just need to reach out and explain what this is and at least try. We've put it in the newsletter, that's about all the outreach we've done.
I do find value still if we can fill the board.
Councilman Jenkins, board four. I mean, I, I certainly agree that other communities and even Southern Maryland have a foundation, and they have done a lot of good stuff. But for me, I, and, and again, this is not blaming anybody, it's just, I'm just perplexed that, that, that we can't get people, and then nothing happens. I mean, we don't, it, it's a good thing to do, but we can't seem to get action. And it just concerns me that we have this money and yet, you know, we just can't seem to get people to be part of the community, to contribute back to the community. And that's just a personal observation, I don't mean to whine, but it's just, and, and, and I, I probably don't know enough, but, but I, as I think, we talked about earlier several months ago when we talked about this, hopefully that we have an accounting system that, that tracks the funds and how they use it, and they, and they report back to us. Okay, so I'll get off the soapbox and stop whining, thank you.
All right, so let me ask you, yes to the community foundation if we can find qualified board members?
That's a yes.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, yes or no for? Councilman Goldsmith, if we find qualified applicants, qualified board members to serve that meet the criteria, are you in favor of continuing with the community foundation?
Quick question, did you say $70,000?
Seventeen.
Oh, seventeen. Because if I looked at where we spent it in the past, we really haven't spent that much. I think $5,000 is the most we've ever spent. But I, I think I like the concept, so yeah, I support the concept.
Councilman Chau.
So it seems like that's a very big if, right? If, if we get board members and we can be maintained, right? So the theory is good. If, if, if we got people on there that were willing to serve, yes, yes.
All right, coming on back to you.
I apologize. I've served on boards, I've tried to give community members to serve on boards and do their jobs. Looking at the history that we have, and I know it's a great idea, but we have other charitable trusts around us in the county. I'm not in favor of continuing because we've not been able to, to keep it staffed. And we, it's not like we've given out a tremendous amount of money. I think that some of the other community foundations could serve their needs.
Okay, so I am going to task our council to look at the criteria that's in our agenda and see if we can reach out to someone that will be interested in serving on the boards. Yeah, but get them, look at the criteria, get them energized, tell them we have fun meetings. And see if, if that is, and if not, then I just fear, oh, I fear that if we dissolve that, it comes to us for the ask. All right, how about we come back with that? I, you're up. All right, chief, are you still with us? Because I see that you were supposed to be here at 6:45. And, you know, you know, my time zones are way off right now, so I think you're right on schedule. In fact, we might be a little bit early for you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Carl Schinner, La Plata Police Chief. During the preparation of the FY23 budget, the agency requested to purchase two Motorola radios, mobile radios and two portable Motorola radios. The agency also included in that line item a new wiring harness to be utilized from a recycled radio that will be removed from an existing cruiser that will be deadlined because of mileage. The funding was included in the agency's FY23 budget. Since the Charles County Department of Emergency Services provides communications for our officers, LPPD is required to utilize the radio specifications set forth by emergency services. Although the Motorola radio purchase is sole source, command staff was able to piggyback on the Baltimore City Police Department's competitive bid that was reached through RFP. Utilizing the Baltimore City bid, the agency will be able to save about $11,700 or 26% off the price of the radios. The total purchase price for two mobiles, which are the radios that are inside the police car, two portables are the radios that the officers wear on their hips, and a new wiring harness comes to $30,224.72. The quote expires on November 30th, 2022. Once ordered, the delivery time is expected to be six to eight months because of the chip issue. We, the ones we ordered last year arrived about two weeks ago. So we're trying to get a little ahead of last year.
And you said this is already budgeted?
Already budgeted, and we're within the, the line item budget.
I do not have any problem with that, and I don't have any questions. Counsel?
What's that slogan you're reading from?
I couldn't tell you.
I could read that.
But it's helpful.
I think it's, it's just in the budget, so no objections.
Great job getting us some savings, thank you.
No, no, you'll be back though, right, with something?
Yeah, good job. Got your bases covered, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, hopefully I put you closer back to.
All right, now matters of information. Director Stock. It says that you have until 6:55, which we'll bump till 7:55, go.
If I fall asleep in front of you, you'll have to understand that I have spent the last 48 hours trying to get home from Minneapolis, Minnesota. We were planning to fly home Sunday night. And to be honest, we just got home at 3 o'clock this afternoon, having spent the night, last night, at Midway Airport in Chicago. It was a lovely little event.
Yes, so you know what, just keep it nice and short today. I mean, just say what you got, get in, get out.
We went to a 60th wedding anniversary for her stepbirds and thought it was just gonna be a little, a fun little weekend. Wow, what a, what a amazingly tough time. We have a presentation, if we could put that up. Craig, I would greatly appreciate that, because I think it would make things a little easier for us. I think there was always some confusion about what a purple pipe was and what water reuse was for effluent. And I just wanted to explain that in the minds of the American Water Works Association, when they classify the color of pipe, a water pipe in the ground for potable water is blue. When sewer pipe is generally green. But total, or non-potable effluent, the color of the pipe is purple. So there's always kind of a, this description of a purple pipe system because it is for the use of treated effluent coming off of the wastewater treatment plant. If we could go to the next slide, please. Part of the need for this is that, as you're all aware, we certainly need to use additional water as we continue to grow. The use of effluent, which is clean source, certainly not potable in its condition, is a source of additional water that can be used for a lot of uses. The quality of effluent from our wastewater treatment plant is excellent. We put out a very, very clean effluent. And we believe that we can be reutilized to supplement our water supply. Fifteen years ago, Bill Ekman and I went up to Baltimore and we made a presentation to Dr. Chin. And we were told that that was a very worthwhile effort. But he, his indication back to us was, we're not there yet. And what we wanted to do was actually run the pipeline from the wastewater treatment plant back to Heritage Green when we were running all of the pipelines down to the plant from the pump station there. Very sad, because it didn't look very far forward, because today we'd love to have that line there and start trying to reutilize some water in different ways. We could, the next slide, please. Currently, Charles County sells effluent from the Mattel-Woman plant back to the Panda Electric Generating Plant up in Brandywine, that you may be aware of. And they also are now supplying effluent to the generating plant there on Billingsley Road next to the landfill. So both of those two are being used for plant water for cooling. We, in about 2008, right when I came to the town, we were working with the county for the possibility of running an effluent line down 301 to the Morant Generating Station at Newburgh. And we were willing to supply our full million gallons down there. The plan didn't go through because actually they decided to use river water. And they have a reverse osmosis system currently in place down there, where they take water out and desalinate it from out of the water, I mean, from out of the river. And one of the things that I had described to you all, actually, at one point, was we were actually working to partner with whoever might eventually own the old generating station that's now closed down there to get that desalinization, the reverse osmosis system, to then be able to possibly utilize that for drinking water for the town of La Plata and bring it straight up the rail line back into La Plata. So we have still been working on that. We're not exactly sure who the final party's gonna be in that situation. But clearly, there are multiple options. If I could, the next slide, please. I provided you, this was a, kind of a, you know, a phased plan as to how all of this was being used. And this was put together by Charles County when we were looking at the whole Brandywine, providing a closed-loop system for all of Charles County, which would, we would be party to. So I won't go through all of that, it's fairly small. But you can certainly look at all of the different utilizations for the effluent and the reuse and how we could combine. Ultimately, the goal for us was that we were actually going to take and run a pipeline from our wastewater treatment plant down off Curly Hall Road. We were gonna bring it back up under Washington Avenue, go up Caroline Drive and go all the way through Phoenix Run back to the wastewater pump station, where we would create a booster pump station. And then we would pump it up through the trunk line sewer line and out to Rosewick Road. And we would tie into the county system up on Rosewick Road so that we would actually create this looping system in all of Charles County, where our million gallons a day would be added to their ability to produce 10 million gallons a day and really have something that could be utilized in many industrial processes. One of the suggestions, for instance, was, you know, with Cheney and concrete, you know, why is it that you need to have potable drinking water for the use of concrete? Why not use treated effluent for that and have a situation where you could utilize for non-potable uses? What we were doing, our modeling based on at Heritage Green, was actually for utilizing two different piping systems. That we would use a small potable water pipe for drinking water in houses, sinks, showers, and that nature. But there would actually be a separate piping system in the house that would flush toilets with effluent, that would use it for your hoses outside for sprinkling and all of that. We also said that we'd be willing to narrow that scope down and actually only use it for lawn irrigation. And that we would only pressurize the system at night so that we were only using irrigation at night. The whole idea here is, as we're growing, we've known for 15, 20 years that we needed to look at other sources for groundwater, other than just what we have for our potable water. And we use potable water currently today for everything. Firefighting was a great example. All of our hydrants are charged with potable water. Where your houses are all connected to the same system for the fire hydrants. Is there any real reason, when you're fighting a fire, that you need to fight a fire with our good, clean drinking water? Or could we reutilize effluent in a separate system for firefighting? And that's what, you know, we in Maryland have not done especially good job. Out in the West right now, they're facing a very, very severe crisis. So they're doing some things out there. They're actually pumping effluent back down into the aquifers and then reutilizing it as drinking water. So there are, you know, numerous different things. There are certainly ways to also run effluent through reverse osmosis and actually create potable drinking water, like they do in the space station, where they're actually converting urine, for instance, back to potable drinking water through reverse osmosis. So it is something where there are a lot of possibilities out there. We, as a town, have to consistently work forward to look at this. Next slide, please. Morant, as I said, decided not to use La Plata's effluent for the cooling. We looked at some other options for that. Actually, one of the things we looked at was whether or not we would pump down to the Port Tobacco River and then just lay the pipeline in the river all the way down to Morant. But here again, it became a financial decision. And the whole closed-loop plan that we were talking about was never implemented. Currently, La Plata's groundwater appropriation permit is 1.23 million gallons per day. MDE has been unwilling to raise our appropriation. MDE has been unwilling to raise our appropriation, as you know. We have been negotiating with the county for this. The other thing is, is that MDE is not going to issue our surface discharge permit, which we have at the wastewater treatment plant, for more than 2 million gallons. The nutrients that we currently have are limited at 2 million gallons. So we know that when we get to 2 million gallons at the wastewater treatment plant, that we're going to have to come up with a different methodology for how we discharge that water. We've known all along that we have to go in and do something different. Whether it's spray irrigation in agriculture, which is certainly a very viable use, or whether we do something with reutilizing water. That I'd give you the example. The Wills Group is planning to build a car wash on the lot next to the Smo headquarters. One of the things they've come to us and asked for 10,000 gallons per day of makeup water. Although they use a recycling program, they still need to add makeup water to the wash water system. We have provided comment back to them that we'd like to do that as a test project for effluent. So that effluent would be utilized as that additional water source and not use our potable water. I think that's what we have to do here is really start thinking out of the box. There are numerous challenges for us with regard to the use of potable water. But also how we're going to discharge in the long run for the waste or the effluent going back into our surface discharge permits. Next slide, please. On the visit from MDE, MDE examined the plant, our wastewater treatment plant, to look at other alternatives. They gave us the plan upgrade to the one and a half for the E and R to one and a half million gallons. And what I'm doing here is I want to show you kind of the phasing is what we've gone through and where we're going to end up really needing to do something with purple pipe. And and all of these things were added that we would increase retention times and the modules we added a fourth module. We add methanol into our sand filters where we add additional denitrification. And we redid all of the controls. Next slide, please. We now have a phased approach for the expansion of our wastewater treatment plant. We did our E and R upgrade in 2011. We finished that. We added the fourth mod and phase one was basically paid for 100% by the state of Maryland. We did add a few things to it to that we paid for some of the costs, but it amounted to about 5% of what we ultimately spent. You know, the 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 big things were that we always are trying to stay ahead of the curve. So when we have a situation where we have the kind of building demand, you look to us in operations to meet that demand. The council makes the decision as to whether or not projects go forward and whether or not we develop. And there are many things as to why we make decisions in the planning department for issuing permits and that kind of thing. But we, as the operations department, try to meet the goals for whatever that is that the council might deem necessary for our growth. Next slide, please. We we have done all of these different upgrades. And you know, this is not something where we haven't been looking forward. If you look at the bottom bullet and basically the 2 million gallon per day, when we did the E and R upgrade for the wastewater treatment plant, because we were removing the nitrate, both nitrogen and phosphorus down to a much lower level, it gave us the ability to discharge more effluent. So now our permit, because of our reduced nutrients going out, our permit now allows us to discharge more effluent. So we're able to discharge 2 million gallons and not just the 1.5 million gallons. Next slide, please. In this, the the phase two expansion is what we've been working on recently. We built a new equalization tank. We have a million and a half gallon equalization tank. And that's working to try and make sure that we don't have large flows coming into the plant and forcing it through. One is the basic nutrient removal and the other is enhanced nutrient removal. There was in 2001, the town of La Plata did a B and R upgrade, which used basically biological methodology to remove additional nutrients. And then in 2011, when we did the E and R upgrade, that was enhanced nutrient removal. And what that did was it took us down to the level of three parts per million nitro total nitrogen and 0.3 parts per million total phosphorus. So those are the two keys that we have. Everything, the the, as you know, the 1.5 million gallon tank was added. The force main splits the flow and takes it over to that so that we can keep a steady flow through the plant. And when we get these high flows, it all goes over to the tank, which we trade later when the flows go down. All of the our systems over there, as you know, are SCADA controlled. Next slide, please. And you can see right there, that just shows where we built the tank and what we're doing to get that flow back through. That was important because it allowed for better treatment over at the plant. You don't suddenly have 5 million gallons a day going through the plant at one time and then a million gallons. It allows us to have steady flow, which means better quality effluent. And that's what we're talking about here in the long run because this purple pipe network of piping is going to require us to have a good quality effluent. We don't want to be sending out lots of poor quality effluent because it'll create problems across the board. Next slide, please. A phase three expansion. When we get up to 1.8 million gallons per day, we're anticipating that somewhere in the 2028 range. And that's, you know, based on lots of different factors. We will have to keep modifying modules. As you know, our plan is where we are currently working on a bid to modify module one. And module one will increase the capacity of the plant by 250,000 gallons. When we finish module one, we will then modify module two. And that will be increased the plant to 2 million gallons. And this, when we do that, is going to allow us time to explore for other alternatives to get rid of the additional 0.5 million gallons per day that we will need to supplement the treatment plant. One of the things that you have to understand, it, the current plant is rated at 1.5 million gallons per day. The ability to grow to 2 million is there with the existing NPDS permit. Once we get to that point, we're going to have to come up with some other alternatives. We will still be able to go forward with our plans to expand the plant to go up to higher levels. It's just we'll have to do something with the nutrients in the effluent when we continue to grow. And whether that's through spray irrigation, whether that's through other industrial uses, whether it's through irrigation in some woodland. All of those things are viable alternatives. But the way we do that is by building a purple pipe network that supplies that water out there. Now, when you say, when will we need to do this? Currently, we're putting about a million gallons a day through our wastewater treatment plant. We have 3,680 EDUs in the town. When you go up to 2 million, basically you can think that you're going to double the population in town before you would need to have this done. When you look at our development models, those times vary. It could be 2028. It could be 2032 or even beyond. But at some point, based on projections given to us by the developments that we have active in the community, we're going to double the number of equivalent dwelling units in the town. And we will have to look for another alternative, very similar to what we're doing with potable water. We know at some point, we're going to run out of our current potable water supply. And we have to look for alternatives. This is why we're talking about this today. Because we don't want to suddenly be talking about this 10 years from now. And one of the things we're doing is looking at and trying to look forward to put some infrastructure in place so that it's not so difficult. Next slide, please. The phase four expansion of the wastewater treatment plant could take the plant to more than two and a half million gallons. So instead of just looking to do something with a half a million gallons, we might be looking at doing something with a million gallons or even more. And potentially, as time goes on, we would hope to think that we do something with all of it so that we're not just turning it back. You know, the sad thing with effluent is it's fresh water. It can be used for irrigation. You can't do that with the river. So once it reaches the river, the river is has, you know, has salt in it. And so suddenly, in order to be able to irrigate with it, you'd have to desalinate the water. So we have a source of really good, clean effluent. And the nutrients that are left in it are actually good for the agricultural purposes. So it is sad that we're not utilizing it. You know, when we talk about the droughts that are facing all of agriculture, a lot of the times that we're not totally utilizing two and a half million gallons per day for some of the agricultural concerns in this area. And that's, I just put these in here so that you kind of see where this is and that we're not just disassociating the growth of the town with where we need to be in the future. We need to know that we're going to be able to take water and have additional water. We know that we're going to have additional effluent and that we're going to have to deal with that. It's not something that's immediately upon us. But I will tell you that today, the new sewer line that we're putting in down at the plant that's going up beside A and S, the 24 inch line, part of that contract was to put a 12 inch line near the surface that will take effluent back from the plant over to the maples. When we dug this all up, it didn't make sense to not put that pipe in the ground for future use because at some point we may want to pump water south of town. And so we're laying that line in the ground for the future. It is damn sad that we didn't do that when we built the Willow Lane Pump Station. We're still looking at that. We've been negotiating with the R Horton to run the line, a 12 inch line up the trunk line sewer that they're putting in right now. And we'd still like to do that. There are many options and we do have to keep looking at that in the future. Next slide, please. The as we, as we said in here, the quality of the affluent from the E and R plant meets numerous requirements for a lot of uses for water. And every time we reutilize affluent, it takes away from the need for additional potable water. We can literally, you know, have a situation where we're conserving the potable water by using treated affluent. It's a positive all the way around. And this also provides the means for disposal of the affluent beyond what we call our TMDL limits. And that's the total maximum daily load that we're allowed to discharge into the rivers. That right now is about 18,000 pounds of nitrogen for the year. And it's about 1,500 pounds of total phosphorus for the year. Anything we can do to reutilize that water somewhere else means we're not discharging those nutrients into the river and would take away from our total maximum daily load. It also would help us by generating additional revenue. What I'm thinking is that if we had a purple pipe network even out in the communities where we could offer people to hook it up to their irrigation systems and charge less for the water and possibly not charge sewer on the on top of that, it would give our citizens an alternative to not pay so much. Today, we're charging $15,000 because they not only have to pay water rates, but they also have to pay sewer for the irrigation that they do. If we did affluent, we could probably set a rate that was considerably less than that $15. So I think it would be a wonderful alternative for some of our neighborhoods to start utilizing treated affluent. Well, it's a separate, currently today, there's no revenue at all generated for the use of affluent. We just discharge it into the river. We, it goes into the creek right there at the bottom of the wastewater treatment plant. And there's no revenue associated with that at all. And the assumption would be, is that we would more than cover our costs for pumping that back into the community and therefore increase the overall revenue stream, which could potentially, and I'm not saying that it necessarily would depending on the rate structure, but the rate structure could be set so that it reduces some of the cost of sewer treatment. It could offset some of the cost of the potable water to cover additional costs from the from the affluent. So it it can potentially be another revenue stream to offset some of those costs. You're basically selling it twice. You sell it to the people as potable water. They bring it back to you and you charge them for the sewer and for the sewer treatment. And now you would take and pump it back out and sell it again. So it is a, it is a, you know, a wonderful conservation use, but also can help and encourage people by utilizing a cheaper source for things that are non potable. Next slide, please. Just wanted you to take a look back at these numbers. I know you've seen this. As you can see there in the middle of the 3170, that's Heritage Green, um, excuse me, Pine Grove. But when you start looking at some of these others, like down at Southwest Quadrant, you'll see down there where Steeplechase and Stagecoach are. There's 1,890 EDUs down there in that quadrant. We are, there's still 156 potential EDUs between Hawthorne 2 and the Hawthorne 3 and some of those additional properties up there. There are a lot of other opportunities for growth in the town as it is today. And that doesn't include any of the additional annexations that are still pending out there. Just throwing these numbers out. This we had looked at the purple pipe system for affluent reuse. La Plata really has three major developments going on right now. And none of those have been connected to the wastewater treatment plant other than just on the sewer side. We do not have them right now connected back with a purple pipe system. And what we've said here is that affluent lines could be installed, purple pipes to serve those residential areas. Irrigation systems for commercial areas, car washes would also save some money. So I think that would, you know, be very helpful to look at in the long run. We, just to, just as a graphic here, we've put together some piping here that you can just see, just as a demonstration as to where we would add purple pipe in this situation. In this situation, that yellow line that you see was where the water was coming back from the, the large red triangle up in the upper right corner there. That yellow coming back is the sewer line coming back from the Willow Lane Pump Station. What we tried to get them to do was allow us to put that black pipe in, and that black pipe would then take treated effluent back to Heritage Green. And what we've talked to D R Horton about was whether or not they'd be willing to try to put together a demonstration neighborhood where we could actually provide purple hydrants and do something with purple hydrants with lawn irrigation that was tied to a purple pipe system. We don't, Maryland was always, the Maryland Department of the Environment always poo-pooed the issue of effluent reuse. They really didn't want to do this because it, it is challenging. There are potentials for it. You know, there, it doesn't have the controls that a potable system has. So they're constantly kind of negative towards it. But here lately, in the last five years, they really have changed their mind. And now, the previous secretary, Secretary Grumbles, as the mayor can attest, was really pushing for effluent reuse. Today, if you see the black line down there at the bottom of the circle on the left where that's our wastewater treatment plant, we are actually building that twelve inch line. When we built the Sonic down there and we put that sewer line around the front of three oh one, we actually laid the twelve inch pipe in the ground at that point. So with the new line that we're building up to tie into that sewer line, we're also going to tie a twelve inch line in there for effluent reuse. So we will then have the ability to pump effluent at least down to the Maples. But the assumption is, is that sometime in the future, we will tie into that and take it either farther down three oh one to agricultural uses down off of, you know, Bellouton Newtown Road. All, all of those other areas down there that could potentially provide some large agricultural uses because that might be the future for us. We may need to go pump water down there and start providing agricultural waters to the farm community. Next slide. As we said here, limitations, M D E has very strict limits where effluent can be used. Land application is limited, for instance, to certain crops in certain areas with limited public access. It generally now cannot be applied within two hundred feet of a residence. But the interesting thing is, these, they've really been looking at this, and they're looking at modifying these kind of things. And this is where I said, it would be nice to have M D E and D R Horton on board with us to do something of a demonstration process. Maybe what we do is only charge the system at night so that it doesn't kick on until eleven, it doesn't charge the system until eleven o'clock at night, and it shuts off by five o'clock in the morning to avoid as much public contact as possible. There is a task force currently working on the revisions to the current regulations here in Maryland. So we'll be looking at that and working with them. Next slide. I think what we're looking at is that I think our goal would be to actually move forward with forcing, as we're building some of these new developments, tie them in with purple pipe and that we end up having a situation where in the next few years that we actually modify our criteria to require purple piping in communities and require utilization of treated effluent. It, it certainly is a change to our current thinking. It's certainly a change to our current thinking from the regulatory standpoint with M D E. But we clearly feel that this is a very positive step and that the town, because we have been a leader in environmental sensitivity, we're a bird city, we're a tree city. We're really focusing on a lot of environmental concerns. We really should be a city that looks at challenges with water use in the future and that we become a water city where we're preserving our potable water and we're utilizing effluent where we can. Next slide, please. In summary, the La Plata wastewater treatment plant will be upgraded with all of the E and R standards that we currently have in place. Any effluent that gets discharged in excess of two million gallons per day will have to be reused or land-applied based on current discharge standards. And when I say that, what I mean is currently our discharge standards are three parts per million total nitrogen, point three parts per million total phosphorus. If there's some sort of technological change that allows us to drop significantly below that at that point, that would allow us to discharge more effluent back into the streams. But it would certainly, right today, the thought in the water and sewer industry is that the three parts per million total nitrogen and point three parts per million phosphorus is basically the technological limitations for where we are today. We would also, developers of new mixed-use developments would be encouraged to use treated effluent for irrigation and other non-potable purposes. And La Plata would again work with Charles County to create a closed-loop system for effluent reuse. Our negotiations with Charles County have always been somewhat challenging. We were, we were never sure back in two thousand and eight that Charles County wasn't actually working against us because they wanted to corner the market on effluent use at that point, and they didn't want to throw La Plata into that market because here again, it might share a revenue stream. So it, it was challenging. But our hope is that at some point here, we do end up with a sharing arrangement with Charles County for potable water. But that if it was ultimately a good agreement, it would also include an arrangement to share non-potable water. So I, I think that these are things that I wanted to just throw out for your refusal and consideration. It is things that we are moving forward with. You all did approve the project down there, which did start laying purple pipe in the ground. And we were very, very pleased with that. And so we will have our first purple pipe coming over to the Maples down here on three oh one. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from council.
Thank you very much for that in-depth presentation. It is pretty fascinating. Even from, it's not sexy, but it's fascinating from that. But you just really never know what happens to the water. And it makes sense, why are we putting fires out with potable water when we can be using others?
So it was too available.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We always had a plethora of, of water. And today, we're finding out very quickly that the Colorado River is running out of water. Lake Mead is at historic lows. You know, all of these things that we're finding are just incredible. And the West, because they've been suffering more from droughts than we have here on the East Coast, they're finding this at a much more rapid rate than anyone had originally projected.
I appreciate you being forward-thinking on that. I think that's a good way to go, and we'll see how it works with the first part, too. Council, any questions?
Go ahead.
I have three questions tonight, and I'll schedule a time to meet with you later. But currently, the purple pipe that we agreed upon was to be laid not for use, but when we decided to start using the purple pipe.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
That's one. The other question is, so affluent water, the purple pipe, is currently being used by Charles County up near Brandywine?
It is.
They're using affluent water?
They have a line that comes up the old rail line that used to run to Indian Head. It comes from Mattel-Woman Treatment Plant all the way up that rail line over to the C S X rail line, and it runs all the way up to Panda in Brandywine.
Is water running through it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Then my last question is, so everybody has heard that we have water issues. And I am just thinking what the residents would say. Oh, they couldn't get water, so now they want to give us affluent water. But I'm sure that's not what they would call it. How do you still, given our current situation of not being able, we haven't resolved it, but you are confident that we will resolve the potable water issue that we have? You're confident in that. But everybody has heard, and that's all you hear. Oh, the town of La Plata is running out of water. And now we sell this idea of the purple line with affluent water. Just trying to think how residents will respond to that.
Well.
Don't have to answer.
Well, let me, let me, let me try to say in my mind how I address it is the fact that it is the environmentally right thing to do. We know that we have a limited resource in underground potable water currently. And in this situation, it's not saying we're substituting that. What we're doing is we're saying, no different than recycling. We're going to recycle water, and we're going to use it for non-potable use and therefore preserve the waters that we have to maximize their use for potable uses. I know, it's hard. It's hard.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, I guess. Great, the purple lines, I really believe in that, and things are great thing to do. Saves water in the long term. Wasn't there a demonstration fifteen, twenty years ago by the mayor of D C, Barry, that he took a water fountain, left the fluid, and said it's so clean, and he drank it? We could have our mayor do the same.
Or the mayor pro tem.
Just like, I, observation and comment. Thank you for that effort. And I, I believe in it, and, and I hope that we can come to some conclusion or some process where we really encourage purple pipes in, in development. Because from my perspective, th- this water issue has accelerated. And, and I, I mean, and all you, all you got to do is look at today and look out west, and your comment about conservation. It stated in our comp plan that we should be a sustainable community. So what better way to do that than to reuse, recycle water? Because I suspect people would say, wow, I'm using drinking water to, to water my garden? Wow. I, I, I mean, I drive by, and I won't mention the individual's name, but he's watering all his stuff, and that's drinking water.
At this point, generally not, but the current regulations. But I would suggest, no different than we're doing, you know, you, you never heard thirty years ago of the use of desalinization or reverse osmosis in this country. Because of some of the things with the space program, they've really worked on this for the, you know, instead of filling the rocket with water and hauling it up to the space station, they have a fixed amount of water. And they just keep recycling it and running it back through reverse osmosis. And the same is true. That's what they did over in Saudi Arabia. That's what they've done in a lot of the Middle Eastern countries where water is, you know, good, clean, potable water. They're using seawater, and they're running it through, and the filtration is so good that it filters out literally all of the impurities. And you can do the same thing with treated effluent. It may become a time where literally it goes from the wastewater treatment plant to a reverse osmosis plant, and then that's just reinserted back into the potable system because we know and we can track the quality, just like they're doing on the space station. So I think, you know, th- those are things that we look at in the future. What I'm trying to say, at least in the foreseeable future, I do see this as utilizing it for non-potable water. I don't see a reason why you can't mix effluent with concrete. You know, every single yard of concrete, you're mixing in hundreds of gallons of water. And I think it's very possible to start using some of those kind of uses.
Thank you very much. And I'm sure that's going to be a conversation that we have in the future.
And I'm sorry that I went past six fifty-five.
Yeah, well, there you go. What would you better on pointing in on those? It was an experiment. We're going to, to, to do better. Future work session topics. We see those. Two other ones that are, I know, have been discussed is traffic calming. And the other one is a consent agenda. And if you don't know what a consent agenda is, just to kind of lay it out there. When something is approved in the budget, it goes into a consent agenda, agenda, almost like a, a bank that when they're ready to withdraw that, like the chief did tonight, it was already in his budget. Instead of coming back to us saying, please, sir, could you, could you approve this? It's just a consent agenda that it's, yeah, we go through and we look and say, okay, this has already been approved. This has been approved. This has been approved. So that's something that is a future work session. I don't know, topic, very. I'm, I'm okay. And that should be a five or ten minute conversation, just if you're tracking. All right, public comment. If anybody would like to speak tonight, we ask that you state your name and whether you're in the incorporated town limits and limit your comments to three minutes, because nothing else is going on time.
As of right now, Madam Mayor, there's no one online to speak.
Okay. With that, I, no, you can't.
Well.
Absolutely not.
Just two quick announcements. I, I was reappointed to the Legislative Committee of M M L because you had to reapply all over again. So I got an email last week.
Congratulations.
And then I got appointed to the Royal, Rural Advisory, Advisory Committee for Rural Legacy Board by the governor. I don't, I don't know who gave somebody my name, but anyway, so. I got, I got an appointment letter in July, and we're having our first Google Meet meeting tomorrow at noon to review all these different properties that are looking for funding.
Fantastic. And we've got.
It's a free-year term, has to be, and I have, it has to be approved by the new Senate when they come in session in January.
Congratulations. That is awesome news.
I don't know whether somebody from M M L dropped my name someplace, but anyway.
And D R B tomorrow? Do we have parking rec tomorrow?
No.
Not, and, and then is crime watch on Thursday?
Yes.
All right. Well, good. Well, I move to adjourn this very pithy meeting.
Check us.
Call in favor. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.